In accordance with the provisions of Open Public Meetings Act NJSA 1046, Place 1975 C-231 S-1, amended 2006 C-7 DS-2, the Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice to the time, date, location, and to the extent known the agenda of this meeting to the Asbury Park Press and the New Coaster on December 15, 2017 by email. Copies of this notice have also been placed in the Administration Building Bulletin Board, District Schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the City Clerk on December 15, 2017. Asbury Park Mission Statement. Our Asbury Park School District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skills and character to succeed in a diverse evolving global society. Roll call, Mr. Hastings, please.
Ms. Breach?
Here.
Mr. Grillo?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Mr. LaRocca?
Here.
Ms. Lozinski?
Here.
Mr. Penney?
Here.
Mr. Saunders?
Here. Please stand for the flag.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with the majesty of justice and law.
Okay, so we have a presentation, Madam Superintendent.
Okay. Oh, okay. So, we are not going to have this presentation. We are not going to have this presentation this evening. We will have it at another time. Madam Superintendent, your report, please.
With regard to our student enrollment, our numbers remain consistent across the school year. The student attendance, again, consistent with this particular time of the school year, we noticed a slight decrease in one of our buildings. Our student population by ethnicity and gender, we're noticing a slight increase, again, in our white population. I had an opportunity to attend an induction ceremony for the Dream Academy students at the high school. I was very delighted to see that we have students that are returning to the district. And so, we will continue to see some small incremental gains there in terms of attendance. Our student suspensions are being addressed very thoughtfully through our discipline, code of conduct, and have remained fairly consistent. And our enrollment for June, again, slightly increased particularly when we look at those areas where students are returning to the district. That completes my report.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Public participation in accordance with Board Policy 0167. Please come to the lectern. You have three minutes, your name and address, please.
I am giving, uh, I'm teaching this for Asbury Park. And on the 4th of August, I am giving my second annual African American Festival here in Asbury Park. And I wanted to know, what is the procedure for me to be able to solicit flyers in the schools during the summer, during summer school? Is that a possibility?
Just bring the flyer to my attention. I'm aware of the event. We can make sure that they go out.
Send it.
To me. It receives my approval, and we can put it on the website.
Okay.
At this particular time.
Okay.
Put it on the website will get you the most.
Okay. Thank you. Now, well, I also can't give you kids like, Asbury, they just had anything, right? And I know that there were flyers in our mailboxes, and then you see the email saying to pass them out. Can that be the same case?
I have no problem making sure that in the summer program, although you are aware we don't have the full complement of students, the students that do attend the summer program, we will be more than happy to give those guys the flyer.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else?
Can I give y'all the flyer?
I don't have a problem with it. Is there anyone else for public participation? It is now closed.
Madam Superintendent, we have our monthly HIV report.
Yes, I'm going to defer to Dr. Howard. Dr. Howard, would you please review the HIV report?
On page 88 is the HIV report for school year 2017-2018. We had seventeen incidents, and out of the seventeen, we had one, five confirmed, well, actually six confirmed HIVs. As you can see on the left-hand side, we have the majority of our HIVs occurred at the middle school, which is not, which is typical, because during that age, that's where all bullying takes place. But again, we have programs in place, and we intend on putting more programs in place at the middle school for assemblies to let the children aware of bullying, and as far as also the teachers as well. Any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Howard. Madam State Monitor, your report, please.
I have completed an end-of-the-year report that will be emailed to the Board Monday or Tuesday. I want to go over it first with Sanche and Jeff, and they were both out this week on professional development meetings that were, Jeff was at a meeting that was required. So, I don't want to hand it out until I have an opportunity for them to see it. But it will be mailed out Tuesday at the latest to the Board. And then, if the Board has questions, we can go over them at the July or August meeting.
Thank you, Madam State Monitor. Mr. Hastings?
Thank you. Could I have a motion to accept the minutes on A-110A and B?
Move.
Second.
Question.
Ms. Setien?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. LaRocca?
Yes.
Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
Mr. Penney?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Ms. Sabas Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you. Could I have a motion for the revised calendar on A-2, number 11?
Move.
Second.
Ms. Setien?
Yes.
Ms. Sabas Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. LaRocca?
Yes.
Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
Mr. Penney?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Thank you. Could I have a motion for the revised calendar on A-2, number 11?
Move.
Second.
Ms. Setien?
Yes.
Ms. Sabas Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. LaRocca?
Yes.
Ms. Penney?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes. I'm staying on B-12A.
Thank you. Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. LaRocca?
Yes.
Mr. Penney?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Ms. Sabas Anderson?
Yes.
Motion's carried.
Mr. Hastings?
Yes, ma'am.
What item is reappearance?
I'm sorry, I understand. B-12A.
I'm staying on B-12A?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Hastings, whenever you're ready.
Ms. Breach, is it 2A or 3A?
B-12A, the viewpoint was. I think the three is cut off in the whole punch. So, I'm assuming you have three. Okay. Let's see, the three, it's 3A, all 3A.
I'd like to present all items, C-1, number 1, through C-14, number 3.
Second question. Mr. Hastings?
Ms. Setien?
Yes. Can I also, can I also make a correction and abstain on the B-13A also? And yes.
Thank you. Ms. Sabas Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Yes, abstaining on C-14, 3.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes to everything except for abstaining on the one-line item, C-1A, the one payment to me for the transportation.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Sorry. Yes to everything, abstaining on C-1A, the one-line item to Giuseppe Grillo, so for aid and loo, transportation.
Thank you. Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. LaRocca?
Yes.
Ms. Lozinski?
No, no, on C-14, number 1, landscaping, and I'm going to abstain from number 3.
Thank you. Mr. Penney?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Yes, abstaining on C-14, 3.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes to everything except for abstaining on the one-line item, C-1A, the one payment to me for the transportation.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Sorry. Yes to everything, abstaining on C-1A, the one-line item to Giuseppe Grillo, so for aid and loo, transportation.
Thank you. Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. LaRocca?
Yes.
Ms. Lozinski?
No, no, on C-14, number 1, landscaping, and I'm going to abstain from number 3.
Thank you. Mr. Penney?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes, I'm staying on C-1.
Those items related to you as well?
Excuse me?
Items related to you as well?
Yes.
Thank you. All items carried. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, thank you.
Madam President, may I?
Yes.
I have an item to bring up, for the full board to consider. I'd like to be more, I'd like to see us be more inclusive when we have conferences outside the state, because we've had three conferences in the last two years that have been in different places, Florida and Nashville, and two board members have attended, the same two board members have attended both conferences, yourself and Ms. Setien. And I was wondering if we could have a more inclusive way to make sure that all board members get an opportunity to attend these events, because we all should be able to participate in, you know, celebrating what the district's doing, whether it's model schools, or I think there was a tech conference in Nashville, I'm not quite sure what it was. And I'd like the board to talk about how we can be more inclusive on travel out of state, because everybody goes to New Jersey schools, that's one deal, but other events haven't been given the opportunity.
Are you finished?
Oh, I believe so, yes.
I didn't want to interrupt you. There are other conferences that are coming up throughout this year, and that will be open to all board members. And I must say also, I agree with you. And that would also apply to any committee meetings that you may have, that you should include the full board. You know, athletics, I know that our Buildings and Grounds chairperson has asked to be a part of the conversation, I'm also asked to be a part of the conversation regarding the tennis, that whole area there, we would like to be a part of that as well. And also, whatever you are planning, the wonderful event at Asbury for athletics, we would also like to participate in that as well, to know the dates and the catering, we would like to participate as well. So, I agree with you wholeheartedly.
But this is something different. This is about travel.
Well, I just want to just make it a nice.
Yeah, but we're talking about two different things, and I understand.
Yeah, I should say.
Okay, but the travel policy, where the board approves three board members, they don't, they don't, the board does not throw out who, but I think we should have a policy or some kind of procedure, whether it should go from A to C, and do a, or a round robin, you know, that's something that I, that I would have hoped would have happened, but I'd like to bring that up. And since you brought up committees, committee structure is based on the fact that you have several board members on each committee. Those committee members research ideas for presentation to the board for approval or nonapproval. Each committee, sometimes it happens, sometimes it doesn't, gets, have minutes that are provided, and committees make recommendations to the full board. If there's an item in a committee, for example, I had an item, a couple items in policy committee that I forwarded to Mr. Hastings for finance about the food. In the past, there's been athletics, there's been other items to be forwarded, whether it be administrative staff for review, and I believe all committees' reports are brought to the administration for review also. So, in tennis courts, since I am off the athletics, I understand your concern, but right now, it's in the hands of the administration. It got to a point where reports were being reviewed, hopefully by the board, when the minutes went out, items had been discussed in work sessions. And now, because of the items that had to be brought up, whether it's the city working with the district, so now it's an administration issue, or the testing of the soil is an administration issue. So, all those items are brought to the attention of everybody through minutes. So, I, I would hope that all the minutes are read, so that everybody knows what's going on, and we know what's going on in the work session. So, I know, I'm not quite sure, if we start mixing committees, when a committee is researching something, then you have too many people going to meetings. So, I understand that inclusion is important, but I'm not sure what the inclusion issue is at this point. I understand that Ms. Setien is on Buildings and Grounds, and she's the chair. When we discuss these things in a work session, then Buildings and Grounds can go back and discuss something during their, their meetings, if Jeff is going through something.
Well, no, that, what you were talking about before, it wasn't a Buildings and Grounds issue, but it was never brought to Buildings and Grounds' chair, it was kept between Athletics and Dr. Howard. So, at that point, I had asked to be brought into the conversations, because it was grounds, correct? I was receiving the information with everyone else, which I shouldn't have been.
I don't understand that. Maybe there's a misunderstanding of what I, what the committee structure is, or how it works, or what's being communicated and what's not, or what should. So, I'm just having, because I know when, once we discussed it, and once, I think you suggested that you be brought in, now it's not even talked about in athletics, we're not even involved anymore. It's now the administration, whatever happens, happens.
But beyond that request, there was an additional meeting.
No, there wasn't.
Yes, after that request, there was. There was.
I don't know.
Yes, there was, for sure.
About what?
I wasn't on the meeting, so I wasn't in.
But what meaning are you saying happened after?
We were, we were just addressing Buildings and Grounds. So, Buildings and Grounds and the tennis courts, there was an additional meeting after the request, after the written request, that Buildings and Grounds was brought in on that meeting, there was an additional meeting that Buildings and Grounds was not, was not involved in.
What board members attended that meeting? Because I wasn't there.
We had a meeting, but we didn't discuss.
I have not gone to a meeting after you requested to be included. The administration may have.
There were minutes about that meeting, and it wasn't just the administration.
But apparently, there's a misunderstanding, but I don't know what you're, if you could find them, and please forward it to me and explain to me what it was, I'd be more than happy to look at.
It's moot at this point, it's just like brought into the. It's moot at this point, it's just brought, it's just folding into the conversation about inclusion in all aspects of board operations. That's, that's all, that's all the conversation's about it this morning.
So, when the Buildings and Grounds is discussing facilities, and you want to change a policy or regulation, the policy committee should be brought in. So, that's what you're saying, I don't know.
And that's what we said at the beginning of the conversation, right?
Right.
Once we, once we got the language together, then we would bring it into policy. At this point, it's not policy.
No, I understand. I'm just trying to understand what processes that you feel needs to be continued.
Or begun. It's just that, we're talking about inclusion, and I think, and it's, it's not, I don't, there's no harsh feeling, but I think we all have to get on the same page, and if it means that we have to work through some things and have some conversations, then that's what we're going to have to do, but it's inclusion, people are feeling left out on all ends of the spectrum at this point in time. So, that's, that's just, that's just what we're trying to say.
That's exactly it. I think, I think we're, we're a little disheveled right now on a lot of things, and to go to your question about being involved with the athletics and the Asbury and things like that, as far as those dates go, I have no control. Those dates are based on their availability, that they're going to give to us for free. So, when they give us, you know, we pick a date that we're going to try to have our banquet, it's based on pretty much what the Asbury says, hey, these are the dates we'll have, we might have one day, might have two days. So, as far as being included with that, if you want to help decorate, be part of the committee, I have no problem, because the more the merrier. Because when we're scrunch for time to try to get everything done in an hour, hour and a half, yeah, it helps to have an extra person to take the, take the things off and put the things back on, so.
And I'm sure, and I'm sure that we all would have been interested in participating, it's just that we were not given the opportunity. It's, you know, we hear on one side that, you know, some people are feeling as though they're excluded, you know, well, that goes around with, with other members as well. So, if we're all going to be on the same page, and if we're all going to have the same common ground, which is having concern for our children and moving this district forward, then regardless of how we may personally feel about each other, we still have to work as a team. And, and I know when I first sat here, you know, that was the whole purpose of bridging the gap, and all of us connecting with one another regardless of how we may personally feel about each other, because it's not about any of us, it's really about the children. And so, in order to do that, then we have to work together. And I know that I spoke to you, Ms. Breach, you know, when you sat on my front porch, and, you know, and, and I said, you know, I would like to be a part of that conversation, as well as the Buildings Chair. So, that has not happened, and I know that the Buildings and Grounds chair had forwarded an email, you know, asking to be a part of that conversation. A meeting did take place following that email, and she was not included, nor I. So, we're just asking to be included.
I'm not sure which one you're talking about, as far as, as far as the normal committee meeting, but if that's, you know, because I have not had anything to do with the city since that, that fact-finding, it was all went to the, you know, to Dr. Howard, to the superintendent, I mean, that was just trying to get something done for, for our kids and something to benefit the community, too. It was like a, a whole thing. As far as, you know, going forward with, you know, the things that I, I have connections and I'm able to get things, so, so I should not do that. So, basically, you're telling me.
No, I'm not saying, we're not saying that at all. We're saying, no, we appreciate everything that you've been doing, and you've been doing an awesome job. That's not the issue. The issue is being included. And because there was an issue where you had felt excluded, you know, and, and I, you know, I reached out to you to make sure that you weren't feeling offended, or I didn't offend you.
I was.
You know what, I, I know, and I, and that's why I reached out to you. Did I not?
I think it was a combination of both of us.
But I reached out to you first. That's the whole thing, to, to, to put that olive branch out, to extend that, so that we can still stay on the same page and be a team, because it's not about you or me, as I have said before, it's about the children. So, I think that you, or as I told you at that time, I think that you are an asset. I think that you are an outstanding board member. I said that to you, as I'm saying it to you again. However, if you are feeling excluded, we also may be feeling that way. So, in order to, we need to squash that, and try to come together and work as a team. That's all I'm asking you. I'm asking you to include the Buildings and Grounds chairperson, because maybe she might have felt a little slighted.
Well, my meetings are Monday, and that's, and your meetings are Wednesdays, and I was on the Buildings and Grounds Committee for several years. When my schedule, work schedule changed, I can't make Wednesday meetings. You couldn't make Monday meetings, so I don't know how, as far as we can get, come together to have a meeting for two of us together, to bring both Buildings and Grounds and athletics together, when our work schedules are two different work schedules. So, we have to figure that out.
I'm available, but I didn't receive an invite or phone call, and that's why.
All the meetings. Our, our committee meetings are all the same, it's the third Monday of every month. We just got an update on the committee meetings, they're all on, Melissa just sent something on the committee meetings, so everybody has the date. So, my question is, how, how is the committee going to communicate other than minutes, dates and things like that, or do you want a committee chair to forward the dates, or I'm not quite sure how, like, if there's a banquet, and we have a date, and we talk about it in the work session, what the date is, I don't know what else we can do. If you want to help out and decorate, I, let's just use that as examples.
I may interrupt you just for just a moment.
No, I'm not. May I? I'm just.
State Monitor. Comment. I think we're talking about two or three different things here. When a board chooses to function as a, as a board of the whole, a committee of the whole, then all board members normally receive everything at the same time, and everybody receives the same information. When you choose to go to a committee system, it's very difficult ever for any committee to be able to share with the full board as much as that committee knows. That's the whole purpose, and usually the outcome, when a board chooses to go to a committee system. If not, then there's no reason to have that committee meeting. If, if the full board is going to insist on knowing everything that that committee met on and said and did, then we might as well have a committee of the whole. That, that's one of the differences. A second thing is, when you do meet, if you do, and discuss these issues, I think there should be a discussion, maybe Mr. Weiss may want to do it, but sometimes, there's been references made at the board and other times to administration making the decision. Well, administration is supposed to make the decision in many areas. There is a clear difference between administration authority and responsibility, and board authority and responsibility. And there are times when it would be wonderful if they can be shared, but there are some times, quite frankly, and I don't mean to offend anybody on the board, where micromanaging is not what should be happening to an administration. And I think every one of us probably has a different idea in our minds of, of where that line is. But when I hear people say, well, we, you know, we're sort of, I don't know what word was used before, just floundering, and when nobody knows what anybody else is doing, I take exception to that, because I don't believe that to be true. I mean, I, to be frank with you, I've seen boards where they, the committees don't even put out the minutes, because they don't have a means or a, you know, the steno way of doing that. And they just make a report when it comes to their areas, much like Dominic did on, on his finance committee tonight. So, I think that it's fine, you know, instead of, I would like to see us move forward, instead of blaming each other as to what we've missed, let's try to, to come to an agreement as to, you know, what, what should happen. My assumption was that many of the board members that went, or one or two of the board members went, went because it was in an area that they were, had been working with. And of course, out-of-state travel has to be approved by the county superintendent of schools anyway, which was done. And of course, out-of-state travel has to be approved by the county superintendent of schools anyway, which was done. Mr. Dr. Riggins did approve. So there is a process, going back to what Barbara asked, there is a process in place. But if it's simply a flyer that everybody should receive of the upcoming meeting, that can be achieved very easily. But I think there has to be some understanding that there are going to be times in the district when, you know, I've, I've heard, I've heard even slight comments that, well, why do we have, somebody said to me, why do we have a board if we have a monitor and a, and a superintendent? And I sarcastically said, I'm not sure, why do we? And I don't, I don't mean not to be offensive to anybody, although I know that it is. But you have sort of an additional layer here anyway of approvals. And, and I thought, contrary to what was said earlier tonight, that the board was moving in the right direction and that there had been a lot of improvement in, in board, the way the board functions. So I'm, I'm somewhat disappointed that you feel that, you know, you're being left out or not informed of board business. I think what maybe you're not being informed of at times is administrative business. And that doesn't necessarily need to be on a day-to-day basis of what the administration does. And there's never been a time, I could report this to you without any hesitation, with the exception maybe of once, that, we won't go back over previous boards, but when, when I took action and, and didn't inform the board of it. They've been informed every time that I either overturned something, or I had to put something on the agenda, whatever it was. So as a state employee, technically, you know, there are just going to be times when the authority has to rest with the superintendent. And Dr. Gray, I'm promoting you already. She, she, basically, Sancho and I talk a great deal, we talk weekly. But make no mistake about it, she is running this district, not the state monitor. I keep hearing the reverse of that all over. The state monitor here is here to review, whether it's me or anybody else, what the superintendent and the board is doing, but we are not making the decisions. That rests with the superintendent, and that's not to put, to shift the blame on, on Sancho. That's her job, her responsibility, and her authority.
Any other comments or questions? Make a motion to adjourn. Move.
What's that?
All in favor?